Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors here for April 16, 2024. May we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Good morning, everybody. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are here with Supervisors Adams being absent today. Supervisor Alejo will be shortly joining us. Also, our County Administrative Officer Sonia de la Rosa will not be in today, so we have Nick Chulo's Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer sitting in today.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections?
No additions or corrections, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll have a call for closed session. Items number one, A through D. Is there any public comment on that in the chambers for our closed session items only? And anybody online?
Nobody online.
That will close public session. Close--
Sorry about that. We do have one person online.
All righty.
We have Mr. Christian Schneider.
Right. Mr. Schneider, you have a couple, two minutes. Good morning.
Great. Good morning. I thought it best to address this in for your closed session. So I go to court on Friday where they're trying to dismiss my case based on the fact that I have not paid the county for motion fees. Is the county aware of this? Because I feel as though county council is still working hand in hand with Fenton Keller in this lawsuit. And there was a contract signed by Janet Holmes releasing or actually putting $44,000 worth of debt onto me without me knowing. And I think that you guys don't know about this either. I keep bringing up the word due process, and I think you guys are thinking this is like a joke. Now, I know Ms. Askew is very keen on financial or fiduciary responsibilities to her constituents. So I would ask, have you explained to everybody just how much you've spent on this lawsuit and what this lawsuit was about? Have you explained to your constituents or to the public? Because what I'm going to suggest now is that you take a course of corrective action. The Board of Supervisors voted incorrectly on a lot of things, and now it's time to set it straight. It's causing material damage to my person, and more importantly, it's robbing your constituents of how you've spent over $180,000 on election activity. So you're going to have the opportunity to deal with this, and I really hope you do because it's creating a lot of problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. We'll close public session. Close--
And Alejo present. Thank you.
Yeah. We'll close closed session. Public comment. Can't get myself going this morning quite right. And with that, we'll recess and turn back at 10:30.
I reconvene the Mardi County Board of Supervisors here. We have a roll call, please.
Good morning, everybody. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present, except for Supervisor Adams, who is absent today. Our county administrative officer, Sonia de la Rosa, is also present today. We have Nick Chulo's Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer sitting in today.
Thank you.
Oh, I apologize. Absent.
And we have the Spanish Interpretation Services, Diego.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré intérprete español-inglés, inglés-español para la reunión de hoy. Si está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de las oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And with the Pledge of Allegiance, Supervisor Alejo, would you like to lead us?
Can we get all right with the pledge? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes. We have a correction for item number 15 under Scheduled Matters. This is for the county administrative office. We have received a revised PowerPoint. We also have a correction under item number 16, which is also under Scheduled Matters. This is for County Council. We have received a revised attachment too.
Thank you. And we'll move on to ceremonial resolutions, which we have four of them today. Two will be presented. Is there any public comment on these ceremonial resolutions? See, none online?
No.
No. Okay.
Move approval?
Move approval from first and second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? And we can go to Supervisor Alejo. Do you want to present yours first? This is number one on Resolution Honoring Sarah Rosalia Hernandez.
There it goes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask our chief public defender, Sue Chapman, to join me. And also, if there's any family members of Sarah Rosalia Hernandez, if you could join me at front. This resolution is recognizing one of our beloved county employees. We're presenting this resolution posthumously to her family. We lost, tragically lost Sarah Hernandez on February 23rd. We adjourned her memory then, but we didn't have an opportunity to do something special for her family, to recognize her dedication to the County of Monterey and its residents, and the many people that she has impacted positively within our county family, mentoring a lot of people and really providing distinguished service to the community. So before I present this resolution and pass the mic to our chief public defender, I want to read what this resolution states. It states, "Whereas Sarah Hernandez, former supervising legal secretary for the County of Monterey, public defender, legal secretary for the County of Monterey District Attorney, the Monterey County Superior Court Clerk, and a secretary in the Salinas City Attorney's Office, the Monterey County Board of Supervisors would like to recognize the contributions of Sarah Hernandez and the vital work she performed within the legal system for the County of Monterey, reflecting her principles of equal justice for all. Sarah was born on February 17, 1979, and raised in Solidad, California, attending schools in Solidad, Gonzales, and Hartnell College in Salinas. She played sports throughout her educational career, later serving for many years in local schools as a coach to many student athletes, serving as an inspirational leader and mentor, and served as president of the Rancho San Juan Boosters Club. She joined the County of Monterey's workforce in 2017 and was admired for her commitment to excellence, acting as a strong advocate for not only her staff and coworkers, but also the members of our county. Sarah spearheaded the telework program for staff, was always the first to volunteer for public service events and fundraisers, and always, always treated people with respect and kindness. She has three beautiful children, Carlos, Adan, and Delilah, that she loved dearly. Sarah, having fought a brave battle against a catastrophic illness with dignity and grace, she passed sadly on February 23, 2024. Sarah Hernandez will always be remembered by her smile, her sense of humor, and her grace. So therefore, today, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and all her residents, we recognize and honor Sarah Rosalia Hernandez for her contributions to our communities and that she will be missed always by all who came to know her. With that, if we could give her memory, a round of applause, everyone, as I present this to her family. I'm going to say thank you, first of all. Thank you. Thank you. You all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. An honor to meet you.
Thank you. Just a couple of words. Sarah was a member of a large family. She worked with the Monterey County Superior Court, the district attorney, and the public defender family. She had the warmest heart, the biggest smile, always volunteering and being the first to participate in community outreach. Just an angel. She loved her family dearly, and she was such a great coworker and person. We will deeply miss her forever. And I want to pass this over to Baylin. And she is Sarah's best friend, and her daughter Delilah are here, along with her other family members, father, brother, and sister-in-law.
I just want to take a moment on behalf of the family to thank everyone. Sarah truly loved her family and all of us, but also her work family. We heard so many great stories, and just throughout the years, it was amazing and cut too short too soon. But thank you.
Anyone else? I want to just say, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we want to thank your family, your loved one, your mother, your daughter, your friends, for her amazing service here. We had a very emotional adjournment. Some of her colleagues came and said some really nice words about her and how she impacted their lives. So just that we wanted you to know personally from all of us how much we appreciated her and how much she will be missed here at the County of Monterey. Thank you very much. One more thing?
One more thing. We do have a celebration of life out in the lobby. It's going to be open from 10:30 to 12 today and urge all of you to come. Thank you so much.
If you could give one more last round of applause. Thank you very much for coming here today.
Yes, Supervisor, I ask you. Do you want to go?
Thank you. I'd like to invite some of our friends from CHISPAS, the Community Housing Improvement Systems and Planning Association, up here to join us for a resolution recognizing Affordable Housing Month. We'll give everyone a minute. We actually have a video to show as well. So why don't we go ahead and roll the video while we get reorganized up here?
Essentially boils down to the fact that we build...
Can we get the audio turned up a little bit?
Every now and then, we'll see somebody in the midst of all the long wait lists that we've had, for example, for our newest Alfred Diaz Infante community, where a family that truly was in need is able to be launched into a platform where they're stable.
So our living situation back in the trailer wasn't probably the best. It was pretty torn down. A lot of the times that we had showed with was a lot with weather, leaking roofs, a lot of the floors started to begin to fall down. Now we're in a better situation than we were previously in living. We were granted a three-bedroom apartment where we live more comfortably compared to a one-room trailer that we had lived in.
The Gonzales family is a true inspiration. Mom and dad are very hardworking siblings and so involved.
Ya esta ya, ya esta de mis hijos que tengo una niña que gracias a Dios que ya está en Estambor.
CHISPAS provides so much more than housing. Housing is just the dwellings, the buildings, but they're nothing without the people and the programs, of course, that we offer to our families.
And essentially, they are bringing their talents and their gifts and their love to the other residents. And in doing that, we create a sense of belonging.
Thanks to Tilsia and the leadership skills that they have taught me throughout the years, I was able to help and advocate for my family to apply for the apartments.
Pues yo doy gracias al Centro de Chispas por lo que hacen por nosotros, los trabajadores campesinos o agrícolas, que nos dan la oportunidad de tener un departamento digno para nosotros y para nuestros hijos. En cualquier casa es digna mientras que uno esté bien, pero yo nunca había tenido un departamento así y que ellos tengan su propia privacidad. Pero yo les doy gracias por la oportunidad que me dieron, que se involucran para hacer los departamentos, que haya más los obstáculos para nosotros como trabajadores inmigrantes de que no tenemos los suficientes recursos. Somos varias y espero que yo no sea la única familia y que haya más personas que califiquen para que ellos también tengan un lugar digno para vivir. Gracias.
Thank CHISPAS for granting my family the opportunity to live in a better living condition.
So housing, and affordable housing, is one of the most critical issues that we're facing that we hear from residents and that the county is working to address regionally and across the state. And the work that CHISPAS is doing to bring affordable housing into our communities is longstanding and incredible. I get the opportunity to celebrate the newest apartment complex, Alfred Diaz Infante, apartment 66 affordable units in the East Garrison subdivision in District Four, just in between Marina and Salinas. We have families who just moved in, and we got to see a video of one of those families just now. So we have a resolution, but I do want to give just a brief moment for Jeffrey Morgan from CHISPAS to make a few comments. And we have one of our newest residents in East Garrison in District Four who would also like to speak, so.
So I'll defer my time to the folks who can really share the story, especially our family member, Yvonne, and Yvette Padilla. We have Ruth Rodriguez, our head of services and our board member, Adoración López. So basically, what I wanted to start out with is Yvette and our family member here wanted to share their story.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. I'm Yvette Padilla. Little something. Again, you know, I want to thank CHISPAS and the... So again, you know, thank you so much. So I'm going to just read a little something that I wrote. So I'm Yvette Padilla. I wear two hats. I'm a longtime resident here for Monterey County. I work for North Monterey County Unified School District, where Diana and all her siblings attend. I've been there for over 20 years, and I stand before you today with a message of gratitude and hope. First, I extend my heartfelt thanks to the organizations like CHISP, whose tireless efforts have not only provided housing solutions for our most vulnerable communities, but have also facilitated essential services through their community services department led by Ms. Ruth Rodriguez. Thank you, Ruth. I'm here to shine a light on Daisy Devetta and her remarkable journey, which embodies the transformative power of community investment. Daisy's involvement in programs like Teen Leadership Council and the Together We Count Census Campaign through CHISP's programs has equipped her with invaluable skills and knowledge, empowering her to become a leader within our community. For instance, let's look at the Youth Leader Census Project in North County. It began with 51.2% participation in May of 2020 and rose to 69.2% of our community filling out the census. Daisy and her youth leadership group led this project. She was only 15 years old. She played a crucial role in amplifying our community's voice, even while working in the fields during COVID. She shared the Misteco video. We translated it in Misteco, and she distributed it and did informal flyers in English and Spanish to our community, urging everyone to participate in the census because she wanted more resources for her community. Through her dedication and perseverance, Daisy has not excelled academically, but has not only excelled academically, but has also become a catalyst for change. Her journey from active community engagement to pursuing an aerospace major as a woman, a first-generation Latina, coming from immigrant parents, she's at Stanford University, amplifies the profound impact of investing in our youth. Most importantly, Daisy's advocacy has extended beyond herself, as she has played a pivotal role in securing housing for her family, ensuring their safety and stability. Her story underscores the urgent need to address the housing crisis plaguing our county, where far too many families are struggling to secure affordable housing amid the soaring rents and limited opportunities. In North County alone, the stats are over 1,000 families are struggling with homelessness. We have 1,380 families that are in our McKinney Vento. 1,110 of our families are doubled up, and these are stats from September 2023. 198 families and counting are living in trailers, mobile homes, motels, and cars. So there is a pressing need for action. As a community, we must continue to amplify the voices of our hard-working farmworker families and invest in our youth, recognizing them as the architects of our future. It is through their resilience and determination that we can aspire to create a more equitable and thriving Monterey County. Thank you for your time and consideration. Together, let us strive to build a brighter future for all residents of Monterey County. Thank you.
My name is Diana González Rivera. I'll be speaking on behalf of my sister Daisy González Rivera, who unfortunately couldn't attend in person because of class. This is a excerpt of Daisy's speech. The definition of home was such a wide definition unique to every individual, but at its core, it's a safe place for growth. Unfortunately, many aren't allowed to prosper and live in comfortable environments. A few months ago, this was a situation for my family, who lived in a trailer home, house in poor conditions, ranging from leaking roof to multi floors. Aside from being a one-room trailer and a family of seven members, it was difficult to live in a small place. But thanks to CHISP and the construction of the Alfred Diaz Infante Apartments, my family was able to move to a more comfortable and spacious environment. But although this was a situation for my family, many continue to live in similar environments. There is still a need for affordable housing. We are part of a community that houses agriculture workers who belong to a minority community that needs to be acknowledged. Living in a comfortable place has become such a luxury that a proper living environment is only a reality for some. Thus, attending affordable housing for all continues to be an issue, but from the efforts I see, I see the brightness in the future. Before I end my speech, I would like to share a bit of my Stanford thesis, which I feel pertains to the situation. Strawberry is a fruit so harmless yet has many bittersweet stories within its seed. Like my dad says, tan dulce pero tan tremenda, so sweet but so tremendous. Strawberries have always been a part of my life and will continue to do so. My parents, like many others, immigrated from Mexico two years to follow the so-called American dream, a dream so big yet so deceptive. The only job available to them was strawberry picking. Consequently, I grew to hate them at some point. A pure true smell filled the house as my parents made their way around. It smells so peculiar that can't be mistaken for anything else. It mixes bitterness, sweetness, dirt, sweat, broken dreams, broken families, and the earth itself. How could someone have a love and hate relationship with a fruit so sweet while I do? Despite its difficulty, I still owe my whole life to it. If it weren't for it, I wouldn't be here. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you all. It was a pleasure to be here.
Thank you so much, and you did your sister proud. I had an opportunity, Daisy spoke at the CHISP award ceremony, was that earlier this year, later last year? And it was really compelling and moving, and you know, the county is committed to partnering with our affordable housing partners to see additional affordable housing built so that everyone has safe, comfortable, warm, spacious places to grow and learn and thrive. So thank you to CHISP for being the ones that are actually delivering on that promise of the county, and I would like to present this resolution. So yeah, it's all yours. All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to say to CHISP, thank you for the great work, and I love the inspirational video, because that puts a human face to the impact that providing these affordable housing units have for our families. And I couldn't be more inspired than to hear the comments of the young person who just spoke right now. Thank you for your wonderful comments, and to your sister, who really, for us, is a shining example. And that description of that distinct smell, because both of my parents worked in the strawberry industry in Watsonville, we know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if it's the mud or the soil, but when they come home from work, it's very distinctive, you know? But for me, I could connect and relate with your story, but there's no better way to thank your parents than to go further than they could ever go, fulfill their dreams to give you, the next generation, a better life. And the fact that she's at Stanford on a full ride, what an inspiration to all of us. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I too just want to say thank you to CHISP, to all the generations of leadership who've gone through that board, who've made the difference for hundreds, if not thousands, of families. And to Daisy's sister, please send our regards. That smell you're talking about, it's still my abuelos in their house that they bought in the 70s in Watsonville. It never leaves. It's part of our story, and we've had that love-hate relationship with agriculture, with that particular crop, right, with the strawberries? But without it, we wouldn't be here. It's what opened so many doors and opportunity. My dad got a full ride, you know, after his coming here, immigrating here to college, and it changed his trajectory. And I know that it's going to change yours, but never forget where you came from, because it's that opportunity that was given to us through this weird world. And those words you shared from your sister touched me extremely deeply and took me back to the smell and took me back to that place and that moment. So thank you for being brave and coming here today to share your story, because your story is the story of thousands more, and the work that we have yet to do together will continue. So thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for Jeffrey, for CHISP, and all the staff, and all the great work you folks do, and the best of luck for you and your future education and for your sister's education at Stanford, and go Cardinal, especially over the Bears.
Oh, wow. I'll let it go today, but it's more important that she's going to do well at Stanford. We'll meet each other at the big game one day.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to appointments. We have six appointments, six appointments, six appointments to make here. Is there any comment from the public? See none? This is not general, this is just for the appointments. General public comment will be in a couple minutes. There are no comments?
Move approval?
Move approval from Supervisor Lopez, second from Supervisor Alejo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? With that, we're going to recess to the Baranda County Sanitation District. May we have a roll call for that, please?
Good morning, everybody. Let the record reflect that all directors are present except for Director Adams, who is absent today. Our county administrative officer, Sonia de la Rosa, is also absent today, so we will have sitting in Nick Chulo's Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer sitting on her behalf.
Are there any additions or corrections?
No additions and corrections to report.
We have one consent item, and that is, acting as Board Director of the Baranda County Sanitation District, we're to authorize the Audit Controller to amend the fiscal year 2324--
Move consent.
--canitation. Yep. Moved by Supervisor, I haven't asked for public comments yet, but do you have a second? Is there any public comments? See none? Will, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll adjourn the Baranda County Sanitation District and reconvene the Board of Supervisors of Monterey County. Roll call, please.
Good morning, everybody. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present except for Supervisor Adams, who is absent today. Our county administrative officer, Sonia de la Rosa, is also absent today. We have Nick Chulo's Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer sitting on her behalf today.
That will take up the consent calendar. These are consent items 23 through 62. General public comment will follow this, but I'm going to ask for just public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody in the chambers or anybody online?
On Zoom, we have a number ending in 902.
Number's 902. This is just for the consent calendar, not general public comment. You have two minutes. Yes, 902. You have two minutes if you want to address the consent calendar. If you're waiting--
Yes. My name is Nina Beatty. I want to make a comment on item number 56, which I'd like pulled off the consent agenda. I'm very surprised that this item is back before the county. This is Gridlife Event at Laguna Seca. It's a four-day event. One day on Friday is 105 decibel levels, and a rock concert is 110 decibel for comparison. On Saturday and Sunday, the county is advising unlimited sound, no decibel limit at all. And then on Thursday, there's an optional track day for 90 decibels. The county has been discussing a sound ordinance for North County, and this is, but apparently the people that live around Laguna Seca aren't entitled to noise protections. It's ironic because the county just finished a lawsuit in part over sound. And is this how the county plans to proceed with unlimited sound days at the track? Is this what being a good neighbor is about? I raised last year a whole bunch of issues. The liability from the activities at the Laguna Seca spilling over into our cities. These events typically, when I looked on the internet, typically happen in rural areas where there are no communities around, and yet this event is happening here where there's cities right next to the park. The public safety issues are huge. Last year, you got lucky because it was a new event and people didn't know about it. But these events, if they're continued, especially this year, is going to grow and grow and grow, and you're going to attract a lot of people and spill over into our communities. In Bart, you had street racing with a pedestrian hit and a car overturned in Salinas. This is the type of thing that's going to happen. You talk about budget deficits, and yet the liability that falls on the county for things happening as a result of this thing, I oppose this completely. And this is a ridiculous event--
Thank you for your comments. Are there any more public comments?
No.
None more? Just for point of clarification, the sound ordinance is actually for the entire unincorporated Monterey County. Are there any items that the supervisors would like to pull from consent?
Move approval.
Move approval from Supervisor Alejo, second Supervisor Lopez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, we'll move to general public comments. For items that are not on the agenda, speakers would have two minutes. Please come forward if you're in the chambers.
I'm Ruth Rodriguez, and I've addressed this to the board before. You, the whole county of Monterey, took my civil rights away. So now I had to get to FBI because you guys don't seem to listen. Police Department lied under oath and withdrew my 911 recording where it was, I was a victim. You took my apartment, you took my-- I failed in my divorce. He won. Attorney lied. Two construction companies lied, and so did your police officers. Why did you guys take my civil rights? And why have I have to be out here homeless in order to get somewhere? Because I'm not getting anywhere with you guys. I'm getting through with the federal. The FBI is involved now. Because you didn't want to listen, now you guys just opened a big can of worms. So I'd like to address, why am I homeless? Because of your police and your mayor, and you guys didn't pay attention to me? So I had to suffer all this time. I want to know why you guys couldn't help me and why the FBI can? Because I got a letterhead from the president, addressed it to the HUD, and nobody cared to listen. If all my recordings and everything went to Washington, D.C., and they paid attention to me, then why haven't you guys? Till this day, I'm still suffering in the streets because you took an apartment, apartment complex that was red-tagged, and there was a death at that apartment. And housing has a lot to do with this, because I could give you names. I have recordings on everything that did, and you guys supported them. So like I said, what are you guys going to do for me now? You've got nothing to say, huh? Because you're guilty.
You have 52 seconds left on your public comment if you--
All I'm saying is Monterey County is guilty on everything that happened to me. Any answers?
Mr. Chair, we don't respond to--
If you don't have any more public comment to make, I just want to ask you to sit down, please. This is the time for you to speak.
That's what I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments in the chambers? Yes?
First of all, let me say I'm confused. I dropped off a comment last week because you were not in session, and I thought you were in session, and I thought that would have been spoken at this session. Is that coming up? Okay, so then I have two comments, and they're two different things. One of them is taking the-- My name is Meredith Krollkamp. I live on Shulte Road in Carmel Valley. I have presented this other thing, and this is two different things, so I need to have two different three minutes.
I'm sorry, you get two minutes for today.
All right. Twice in April, I was traveling west on Carmel Valley Road, posted orange speed limit 25 miles an hour, and was passed first by five cars and yesterday by four cars. They all crossed the double center line. County Road G16 is not a California State Highway. California Highway Patrol has it on low priority. California Highway Patrol Dispatch says Caltrans, they say, "Not us." Monterey County, Monterey County says, "Not us." Call planning and construction. Nobody answers. Between Cuyahoga Way, Brookdale, and the Valley Outlook pullout, there's less than one mile. Enable the sheriff to issue speeding violation warning tickets to offenders. Demand the MST-- Demand the MST school bus and school buses to obey these speeds limits. I'm instructing my attorney to prepare documents now before I am injured or dead for obeying these posted speed limits. My potential death or injury lies in your hands. And I have another comment. And that one I brought to you, and why isn't it not being read out loud?
Thank you for your comments. The comments need to be presented here. We don't read them out loud. Anybody else in the chambers? I'm sorry, ma'am, you have to sit down. Is there anybody else in the chambers that would like to speak? Anybody online?
Yes, online we have a number ending in 837.
Yes, number 837. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Brian Rosen, and it's a pleasure to address all of you today. You know, I want to tell you something I think you all need to be familiar with if you're not already. For years, the Monterey Salinas Transit and the powers that be have told us that the railroad tracks would stay in place and that both uses would be compatible in the corridor. The very environmental assessment of MSD says the railroad tracks will remain in place. And they had countless public meetings where this was told to the public. And yet now we're being revealed that 0.83 miles of rail will be removed. I don't think the public is very happy about this. MST seems to go on and on about how the rail isn't usable and how both uses can coexist in the corridor. We know that rail isn't usable and needs to be replaced. But the question is, why should we lose the best priority for rail to get the best priority for the SURF bus, which is now 91 and 1/2 million? And once the rail goes in, which will be a lot more effective because SURF is only bypassing five miles of traffic during rush hours, it will be a big waste of money. Probably be up to 100 million by the time it finally gets in, if it gets in. And I think that rail is a much more environmental answer. It has much more connectivity. We can connect with Santa Cruz. They're trying to do something. I'm trying to get answers about where this alignment rail would go to. I think it's going to be very costly and expensive if we have to realign rail. We already have the ballast, the underlayment, and if we have to have fill and we have to have support structures for the dunes and realignment, it would be very, very expensive. I'm not getting any answers from MST. They're sending me documents that have nothing to do with this. But if you could please ask the TAMC and MST to show us exactly where the rail would be realigned. I don't, rail is number one priority here.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen, for your comments. Any other online?
Yes, we have a number ending in 902.
902. Yes, you have two minutes on general public comments.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I am appalled when I hear what the first speaker had to say, and it just emphasizes that we hear, I hear these speakers coming to the Board of Supervisors, as have I, and raising issues in our community, health and safety issues, neglect, unaddressed problems, and they continue to be unaddressed and ignored. I have brought to you the situation at Moss Landing. I had the opportunity to drive past Moss Landing again two weeks ago. And I have brought to you information about a unpermitted nuclear reactor that was at Moss Landing by PG&E for about a decade, raising severe issues of health and safety as far as radioactive contamination. And the board, the county, the Health Department took no action. I've now updated the State Department of Public Health about this situation, who had recommended that I contact the county health officers. But that, now the ground has completely been plowed up and disturbed and transported who knows where, and any equipment found buried in the ground has been transported to likely unpermitted for hazardous waste. No investigation done. And this is typical of many other environmental health issues in Monterey County. Secondly, I would like to, there have been several TV presentations by supervisors on broadband and the great supposed need for broadband to everyone. Well, an easy solution that already exists with no money involved is that AT&amp;T Copperline goes to every home and every building in Monterey County. And DSL service is provided via AT&amp;T and other companies to every home and building. There's no need to spend more money. The internet already exists, the capability exists to everyone, and the county would be wasting money, throwing money away-
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Beatty. Any other public comments?
Yes, we have Christian Schneider on the line.
Yes, Mr. Schneider, you have two minutes.
Good morning. These comments are for Supervisor Alejo. I was in deposition about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, in the issue of Dolores Huerta came up. And since this is going to be part of the record, I want to double down on why Luis Alejo should not be voting on anything in regards to me. One, because he might potentially become a witness. But two, he spread some rumors about me lying or not knowing Dolores Huerta. It was a shame Dolores Huerta went around and had his back on it. But to clear it up, in 2012, I went to the DNC, and I was with Luis Alejo. I know he probably doesn't remember me, me being the only six-foot-two white guy in the group, but for the record, not only did I know her, but she called me often after we met at the convention, talking about Supervisor Alejo and how bad his consultant was to him. Additionally, Supervisor Alejo has made comments from the dais against me, suggesting that I had filed an FPPC complaint as a way to gum up the works or slander people. Not only is it inappropriate to use the dais to attack somebody for filing a legitimate complaint, but those complaints actually turned out to be true. So I'm requesting that either Supervisor Alejo is censored for his remarks or that he apologize to me.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
Lastly, we have a number ending in 705 on Zoom.
Yes, number 705. You have two minutes.
Yes, good morning, supervisors. Lauren Moffett here. I am urging you to start planting trees in Salinas and saving all the big trees you can, especially the eucalyptus, the non-native, that is so very important because they grow up to 300 years and they store up to a ton of carbon a year, and they're, one of them are oxygen-producing trees. And also, I ask that you curb your pesticide and herbicide use. There's tons and tons being used in this county and all over the world, and it's killing us and killing all the insects and the animals, and it's unnecessary. I think we need to get away from that. And also, could you please consider three minutes? It just shows such disrespect for the public that you really don't care about our comments. You know, you're trying to cut us off, and the Bagley King Act, Keen Act, was created just because politicians did not want the public's input. So I would, it would be a great courtesy to us all, and there's so many intelligent people out there that want to be active, but they don't feel they're being listened to, and so they just say, okay, it's your fate, it's your world too. So, you know, we all work together to make this a better world, and your part in this is very, very important. So thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments online?
That is it?
That is it. That will close public comment and move on to the scheduled matters, which is item 15, which is receive a presentation for the Mint Systems on the status of a power purchase agreement for installing some solar panels at Nativity Road. Good morning. You use the microphone up on the podium, not that one, the other one, I think. Okay. Sure, go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, board and public. While Rob gets set up, I am Cora Pantraud, the Interests Sustainability Program Manager, and I'm very excited to bring the solar and battery storage project to the board today. This all started with the Program Services Agreement back in 2019, which resulted in the board directing staff to move forward with these three power purchase agreements at Schilling's Place, the Sheriff's Public Safety Building, and the jail complex. At the time, power purchase agreements were new to the county as a way of implementing projects with capital costs of millions of dollars without the upfront cost. So making this financing mechanism work with the county construction agreements took years of negotiation and feedback from many county stakeholders, thanks to all who participated, including county council, PWFP, the Sheriff's Department, the Health Department, and Nativity Road for all your engagement in this project and helping to standardize this process. Last summer, the Master Energy Services Agreement and two of the three power purchase agreements were approved by the board. The third power purchase agreement before you today was delayed due to potential changes in county usage of part of the jail complex. So stakeholders needed more time to evaluate a solution that worked for all parties. Mint has been a great partner in meeting county needs during this process with multiple project designs and incorporating our stakeholder feedback and our third-party reviewer changes before the April 22 PG&E funding deadline for the self-generation incentive program. Overall, this pilot project has charted a path for the county to take on large-scale sustainability projects that achieve cost savings and climate mitigation goals without major upfront costs. The program has learned a lot from this process and is looking forward to bringing more projects to the board soon. And I'll now pass this over to Rob Himes, Chief Development Officer, and Kenji Tiberi, Project Development Manager with Mint Systems, Inc. for a detailed presentation on this power purchase agreement and the project as a whole.
All right, thanks, Cora, and thanks to the Board of Supervisors. Yeah, like Cora said, you know, we're here to seek approval for this third project in our zero-carbon resiliency initiative pilot that we started back in 2020. This was back with Ashley Paulsworth when she was the Director of Sustainability. And like Cora mentioned, we've been working on this for years. A lot of this was new to the county, and we did a lot of work with the county council, and they've transitioned through Christie and Shane Strong and now Michael Wildin. And so been great support we've gotten throughout the county, throughout this whole process. Just to get into a little bit more detail on these projects, the idea of California Code 4217, I think you're all familiar with this at this point, as you are probably a lot of this, but these projects were basically entered into contract through using this California Code 4217, which enables, you know, public entities to enter into sole-source contracts based on the fact that there is no capital required upfront and that the project energy savings actually outweigh the cost of the project. And so it enables the county to see immediate cash flow and savings, and that's kind of what enabled the California state legislation has put in place to enable us to streamline the process and help get these projects done. I'll give you a little bit of an update on the two projects that are now in process, the Sheriff's Building and the Schilling Administrative Building. Both of those projects have now been mobilized. We probably start construction in the next couple of months here. We've been working with the facilities team for the last few weeks on getting all that projects dialed in and all the staging that's going to happen out there. And so those projects are already underway and in contract. Those are both great projects. The Sheriff's Office is a little under 400 kilowatts on the roof of the Sheriff's Building. We completed a shutdown back in January, and we're expecting to be complete and operational by Q3 of this year. The Schilling Building, the administration building, the main building over here in Salinas, is about a megawatt, a little over a megawatt on the roof, plus a battery energy storage system. It's about 2 and 1/2 kilowatt, megawatt hours. We there also completed an exploratory shutdown to dial in our engineering. That was back in December. We're expecting that project to be complete this December. That project also does have a microgrid, which enables critical backup service, which is similar to the jail, and we'll get that in a minute here. So to the jail, like Cora mentioned, the jail has gone through a number of iterations. And I think it was in 2022, we found out that there were some other plans being made for the jail complex. Looked like it may go the route of a new behavioral health center. And so we put this project on pause for a bit and kind of, we're basically sent back to the drawing board when about a year later, turns out that we kind of wanted to figure out a new plan to keep the S-GIP incentive alive and also maintain the interconnection that we had already applied for. In case you guys all don't know, S-GIP stands for the Self-Generation Incentive Program. It's a specific incentive by the state of California to incentivize people to deploy energy storage. We captured a pretty large rebate, almost $750,000 for this project, and we didn't want to let that go. And so at first, we tried to find a way to maybe do the project as a storage-only project because we knew the space where we were trying to put the solar was sort of in jeopardy. We didn't know what the final design was going to be, so we couldn't get the solar deployed. So we were looking at maybe deploying just the storage only and then coming back and doing the solar. We went down that road. PG&E was not excited about that and really rejected that design. And so we had to go back to the drawing board and find a way to deploy both the solar and the storage together in the time to meet the deadline. As you see there, we have this deadline to meet to get to the next proof of project milestone. It's part of the S-GIP program is to meet these specific milestones to show that you are making progress and not just reserving these funds for no reason. And so we have until next week, down to the wire here, to make sure that these projects are in contract so we can show that the county means business is actually going to do these projects, and that's why we're here today, and that's kind of the sense of urgency. And so we've redesigned, and I'll kind of go through this process. So this is the original plan, had all of these solar canopies all in the parking lot, as you kind of see there on the western side of the main jail complex, the main jail building. That was the original Plan A. That was back in 2021. We then pivoted to this design, which is really a ground mount, kind of lower ground-mounted solar along the eastern side of the facility. This was not an easy design. It was also, the Sheriff's Department wasn't exactly excited about this idea, and there was some, there's some politics around, you know, whose land was this and what was going to be the future of this land. There was also the potential that there may be some buildings going in to the southeast of it and may create shade. And so there were some problems with it, but it enabled us to put solar, to deploy solar in the time we had. And so we were looking at it as an option until about a few weeks ago. Turns out that the Sheriff's Department is actually now going to take over that building. It's no longer going to go the route of behavioral health. And so they freed up the carport area, and so we pivoted back to the carport design. And this happened in the last few weeks. So again, to try to meet these critical deadlines, we had to make some quick moves. We were able to redesign the system. As you see here, it's a little bit smaller, but still meets the requirements of the interconnection and still meets the requirements of the S-GIP program and the incentive that we have reserved. So what you see there is kind of the, maybe not the final, final design, but the design that we're going with now. This is the design that we've built all the economics around and the power purchase agreement itself. Some details there, we've worked with the Sheriff's Department very closely, and it sounds like they need the northern part of these arrays to be elevated to allow for logistical flow of their larger vehicles. And so some of those carports in the northeastern area are actually raised to 14 feet, which is pretty high. This project also has a critical backup microgrid. The battery is located down in that southeastern corner by where our point of interconnection will be. This battery will be capable of backing up loads at the new jail, which is also connected to the same service, for approximately two to four hours in the event of an emergency. That time could be extended depending on a lot of variables, mainly the weather and what's being used at the jail currently. But it does provide that two- to four-hour backup in an emergency, which is essentially covering 98, almost 99% of any of these critical backup durations. So just to get back to what Cora had mentioned about the PPA versus other financing or cash, the beauty of a PPA and really what it does for the county is enable the county to get into this project without any- is enable the county to get into this project without any upfront capital. There's immediate savings. Once the project is operational, the county starts saving money on the order of, let's see, I started to skip ahead, but I think this project has about over $50,000 a year in the first year, and then that compounds as rates escalate. Versus cash, where this project, you know, could cost anywhere close to about $8 million. And so that's capital that the county does not have to come up with. It's fully financed. This is a turnkey power purchase agreement. The county literally will only buy what is generated by the system. And there's an incentive for the owner of the system to keep the system producing and the county saving. And so there's kind of a mutual incentive there built into it. The PPA also fixes the rate of electricity. So it's this incredible hedge for the county while PG&E rates are escalating really rapidly. As you can see here, there's been a compound annual growth rate of over 5.5% over the last 10 years. More rapid increases are expected. The last increase, which happened in January, was 12, over 12.5%. That's a massive increase to electricity rates. And so the PPA, like it says here, it enables predictable and cheaper energy for the county for the next 25 years. You know, part of Mint's mission and part of why these products are so popular with public entities is this is the way we enable the county to save money through renewable energy. This is, you know, leveraging a free resource in the sun, generating our energy, being able to redistribute that money, those savings, into other county programs. You know, I just heard from CHISP and all the work that needs to be done for housing. It's how do we redistribute some of the money that utilities like PG&E are monopolizing and taking advantage of when we can do, we can generate our own energy? It could be cleaner, more reliable. And so through the PPA, we can actually enable the county to save up to, you know, ends up being millions of dollars over the course of this lifetime. And then those savings can be redistributed into other county projects. This is another table that illustrates how rates have been escalating. Just to give you guys a more clear idea of this particular facility, these are actual rate increases at the jail. So starting in 2021, you can see the energy rate was 11 cents and it's gone to 13 to 14 to 15 cents now, those rate increases. And you can see there's two ways, right? There's energy charge increases, there's also demand charge increases. And you can see that the overall escalation from '21 to now is, you know, 45%, over 70% on the demand side. Those are enormous escalations. And so by doing this project and locking in your PPA rate, the rate you're going to pay for energy, you're saving time, you know, saving over time and it compounds, and that's really what results in this. This table is a bit of an eye chart, sorry about that. But if you look closely, you basically see that you're starting out, the project is saving the county, well, avoiding the cost of paying PG&E about $483,000 a year. The PPA rate, the payments you're going to make to finance the system are only $430,000. So in year one, you're saving over $50,000. And then, as we just see, as I saw, PG&E rates are going to continue to escalate at a rate far greater than the PPA itself. The PPA in year 10 actually gets fixed. That's the way we've structured it, and so that the county will fix the rate that you pay for energy in year 10 and then all the way through year 25. Meanwhile, PG&E rates will continue to escalate at 3.5% year over year over year. And so what the result of that is, is the county saving a cumulative total of $6.6 million over the 25 years. Again, that's money that can now be redistributed into other county programs, which is significant. So that's the jail in itself. This is really one of three projects. There's the jail, the sheriffs, and Schilling, all combined. As you can see there, over the 25-year life of all three projects, it's a little over $10.5 million in savings for the county. So again, really significant savings. These are great projects for the county, and there's no upfront capital. The, these systems are owned and operated by a third party. There's no maintenance. They operate, you just buy the power from them, and it's clean and reliable power. Plus, you get the microgrid backup functionality as well. This is just another table that shows the combined result. Again, 10.5 million cumulative savings. Another important part of this whole thing is, yeah, is, you know, the environmental impact. To show you what that looks like here, the solar offset for the jail is about 50% of the total consumption. This is like in an annual, on an annual basis. And so compared to what we're calling the dirty grid, which is really a combination of 3CE and PG&E, right now, it's about, sorry, my screen's blocked, but it's about 46% of your emissions are coming from the dirty grid. But, or we're going to offset about 46% of it. The current emissions load is, it looks like it's about 1.8 million pounds of GHG emissions, the equivalent. And then the solar is going to offset about 922,000 pounds of that GHG emission total for the jail on an annual basis. And again, that's compared to 3CE's energy mix, which is slightly better than PG&E's. On the next slide, we can look at all three projects over the lifetime of them and how much emissions we're going to offset, and it's significant. You know, a total of 6.8 million pounds of CO2 being offset, the equivalence of, you know, planting 4,000 acres of trees, taking off 670 vehicles per year off the road, 500 households annually. So these are significant environmental impacts that the county will be supporting and being able to present to the community. Again, just to caveat, these numbers represent a comparison to 3CE's energy mix, which by 2030 is going to be 100% renewable. So this was really like a six-year look ahead, whereas in six, seven years from now, most of the energy mix that the county of Monterey will have will be 100% renewable if 3CE does come through with what they are going to do. So yeah, in summary, we need to act quickly to secure the S-Gip incentive and make sure that we hit that proof of project milestone next week. To have the power purchase agreements need to be executed by 4/22. These designs have been reviewed by multiple departments and stakeholders across the county, the Sheriff's Department, the facilities team, even NMC. The Alternative Energy and Environmental Committee has looked at them. The budget committees have reviewed. County Council has gone through these contracts. There's the Master Energy Service Agreement and the Power Purchase Agreement, both of which have already been executed. These documents are identical, other than the fact that they have been populated with different scopes. And yeah, the jail complex alone, net savings cumulatively over 6.6 million and 3.2 million pounds of CO2 emissions avoided. So very compelling projects. Just wanted to present those to you in more detail. But yeah, again, we're just seeking approval to move forward on those power purchase agreement for the jail itself. That's the objective of today.
Thank you for the presentation. First, I'd like to see if there's any questions from the Board before I go out to the public. Any supervisor ask you?
Yeah, thank you. I think I read in the staff report that this was, had support from the AAE Committee. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Did you have another question? That was it? Any other? Okay, we'll take this out to the public. Is there anybody in the chambers that wants to speak on this matter or online?
Nobody online.
Okay, closed public comment on this, bring it back here.
Actually, you know what? Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, is there?
Number ending in 705, just raise their hand.
All right, yes, number 705. Please, you have two minutes to comment on this matter.
Yes, hello. I approve of this project because it's on a rooftop, and solar on rooftop is a great idea instead of ag fields and deserts, which is what's happening all over the world now. They're just covering land. So in Carter's era, he had a plan with Arco Solar and other oil companies to give him a tax break in exchange for them coming up with green alternatives. So Arco Solar came up with solar on rooftops across America. And if we had gone that route before Reagan came in and tore it all apart, we wouldn't be facing the climate change we are today. So I approve. I thank you for considering the rooftops, and I hope you cover all the rooftops in Salinas with solar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else online? Thank you. Bring back here the Board Supervisor Leho, you had a commenter.
Mr. Chair, I wanted just to express my strong support for this. About, I think it was three years ago, I had filed a referral, and under Ashley Paulsworth, she helped us narrow where best to start these kind of efforts that save us a lot of money on energy and save taxpayers money that we could invest in other infrastructure in the long run. And I think this clearly speaks, that last chart about how much the county would be saving. I think it shows us why this is important, but there is some important deadlines to move this forward. And as the presentation showed, it went from one proposal to the other, back to the original proposal. But we're ready to move forward on this, and I want to thank Mint Systems for helping and working with Cora to get this to this point at this time. But I want to stress how important it is and what a win-win this is for the people of Monterey County and to our facilities. So with that, I want to make a motion to approve Staff's recommendation.
Motion to approve. Second by Supervisor Askew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. With that, we'll move on to Item 16, which is to approve and adopt the California--
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Records Act request here, policy. And Mr. Strong?
Give the PowerPoint presentation.
Our office has not received a copy of your PowerPoint presentation.
All right. So I'm just going to go off of the copy that I have on my phone. So good morning, everyone. We're here today to talk about the California Public Records Act, one of my favorite subjects. The county does not currently possess a California Public Records Act policy. But just a quick anecdote, at the end of last year, the California, it was CSAC, requested that each county perform a summary of their California Public Record Act requests over the last five years. And in this regard, the county of Monterey-- oh, thank you, Supervisor. Oh, that's lovely. I didn't even know we had that capability.
Put it on the projector, huh?
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Go back to the old technology.
Yeah, the Elmo scream is what we called it when I was in school. Is that something that we can put up? Oh, and that's--
You're good.
Wow, great teamwork. Oh, that's lovely. Thank you. As you will. It's going to be less than five minutes once we get this off the ground, I swear. Lovely. Okay, go ahead to the next slide. Thank you, sir. As I was saying, we have the California Public Records Act, and what a beautiful statute it is. It grants access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business. And it's a fundamental and necessary right to every person. Recent survey, as I was just about to share with you, over the last five years, six years, we've had 14,000 requests resulting in half a million hours of staff time, approximately, that is. We're trying to do our best. And keep in mind that the CPRA, we don't get paid back from the state for the time that we spend. So it's really important for us to be responsive and try to use resources to the best of our ability. Next slide, please, sir. And so in that regard, the county's recently launched the Next Request platform to better assist staff in facilitating with complying with our obligations. It automates a lot of functions that have been taking up a lot of staff time. Next Request also tracks the volume of requests and the number of days the county takes to complete each request, keeping us accountable and identifying issues as they arise. And the adoption of a policy, the policy before you today, will assist staff and departments to understand their obligations and how their obligations bend to Next Request to make sure that we're all on the same page. Next slide, please. So the policy, this has been drafted with the assistance of the CAO's office as well as various departments and my own office. Thank you, everybody, for assisting. Some highlights from the policy. All CPRA requests must be uploaded into Next Request, regardless whether a request comes in through a phone call, through regular mail or email. Departments must generally appoint two staff members to work within Next Request to serve as the department's interface to the requester. Departments should notify the Office of County Council when a request is made by a law firm, and departments should notify the appropriate PIO when there is a media request. Next slide, please, sir. The CAO's office will monitor Next Request to ensure departments are meeting their deadlines and assisting staff with issues. The Office of County Council will provide trainings, including with this policy, to staff. When a request concerns more than one department, there's a whole process to make sure that we are responding with one unified voice, and it's all thankfully done in the backend of Next Request, and CAO's office is very ready to take on that task. Finally, the policy provides direction on best practice and common legal issues under the CPRA. So it's all in there. Next slide, please, sir. So this is the requested action. Our office seeks to add this policy to the Board's policy manual in order to maintain the policy in perpetuity and so that the policy may enter into the normal cycle of review every five years. And with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Mr. Strong, just on one of your PowerPoints, it just says that departments shall notify the Office of County Council when a request is made by a law firm. But I would assume that that is any type of public records request? Or is there a reason why it's only a law firm and not from a member of the public?
Yes, yes, Supervisor. So our office as a matter, of course, does not assist departments with every request that comes in. And that's largely due because the departments know the requests and their materials better than we do. However, the reason why there's direction concerning law firms is our office just wants to kind of be able to look at the requests and see, is this going to maybe germinate into litigation later on? That's a very rare thing. I'd say 1 in 10, maybe. But it's just to put it on our radar so that we're cooperating at an early stage.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions from the Board? Any comments from the public?
Nobody on Zoom.
No comments, then bring back here to--
Move approval.
--approval by Supervisor Lopez, second by Supervisor Leho. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? Yes, we did. I just did, just, yep.
All right, thank you all so much for your time. Thanks for your assistance.
Thank you. And with that, we will recess for lunch.
Mic one check. Mic two check. Mic three check. Mic four check. Mic two check. Mic five check. Mic six check. Mic seven check. Staff mic one check. Staff mic two check. Clerk mic check. ADA mic check. Lecturer mic check. Wireless mic one check. Wireless mic two check. ADA mic check.
Thank you for watching! Please like, subscribe, and hit the notification button to not miss any recent uploads!
Good afternoon. We're going to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors for today. You have the roll call, please.
Sure. Good afternoon, everybody. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present, except for Supervisor Adams, who is absent today. Our county administrative officer, Sonia de la Rosa, is also absent. We have Nick Chulos, Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer, sitting in on her behalf.
Thank you. And we have the Spanish interpreter service downstairs, but Diego Celis.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré su intérprete español-inglés e inglés-español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio de interpretación, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And first item up is item seventeen. Riverview at Las Palmas project here.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Zoe Zep, and I'm the project planner for PLN 150372, Riverview at Las Palmas LLC. Staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors continue this item to a date certain of June 4, 2024, to allow staff additional time to address new comments from the public regarding the affordable housing aspect of the project, as well as allowing for Supervisor Adams to hear and consider the project as it is located in District 5. Staff is available for any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board on this? Should go out to public comment on this matter? See, nobody in chambers, nobody online.
Nobody online.
That, um, any action by the board to set this date?
Who's staff request?
First, a second. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to some other board matters. We have the county administrative officer comments?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have just, we have no new, well, listen, let me back up a second. In terms of the CAO comments, caught me off guard there. I wanted to just highlight the work of the clerk of the board for just a moment. In addition to putting together the agendas and helping with the conduct of the meeting, the clerk's office has been very busy lately with ITD working on an application, an app, an online app regarding boards, commissions, and committees. And just a couple of quick comments about that. This will allow board aides and department liaisons to see the lists of applicants submitted, review and comment on individual applications, create clerk notification forms, as well as to view board contact and member information all electronically. So it should really help with the entire process. It'll auto-generate email responses back to the applicant at every point in the application process, and is also going to be part of the new public website. It's really a use of technology to help streamline the appointment process and really manage it in a more effective way. In 2023, the clerk of the board office generated forty meeting agendas, and so far this year has processed two hundred and ten ceremonial resolutions, both framed and unframed. It was kind of a staggering number. I was kind of surprised myself. It's, you and the clerk's office have been very busy in that area. So, but that concludes the comments. And I know Ms. Del Rosa is doing well, and she wishes you all well today. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. There are no new referrals, but we do have two referral responses for today. The first one is item twenty, which is an update on referral 2017.20. That was some years ago, from Supervisor Alejo requesting a lease agreement between the city of Salinas and County of Monterey for a BMX bike track and skate park. Do we have someone to report on this? Is she online?
She is not online.
All right. Well, maybe we can return back to this one and see if she can be online or whoever is going to speak on this. So we'll move on to item twenty-one, which is another board referral, and this is 2024.04, analyze and address the floodplain issues in Little Bear Creek, and to expedite a permit process onto that. I believe that would be Public Works. Do we have somebody online for Public Works?
Good afternoon, Sheriff. This is Randy Ishi, Director of Public Works, Facilities and Parks. Thank you very much for the introduction. And by way of reference for the board, item number twenty, if we could please change the order so that way it's heard after this item, as our assistant director, Lindsay LaRabel, will be presenting on that item, and she'll be doing it in person. So we can go ahead and get started with the preliminary analysis report for Little Bear Creek. And attending with me today are several members from other departments, including the Housing and Community Development Department. including the Housing and Community Development Department, the Water Resources Agency, and other departments that have a contribution to this item. And with that, we will start off with the presentation that I see is already brought up on the screen. So we'll go to the next slide. And again, this is a preliminary analysis report for border referral 2020.04. The overview for today's preliminary analysis report will be a discussion of the background and staff's understanding of the referral, the process, the challenges, and then recommendations slash options. So as we go to the next slide, and brief about the background, we have what's known as the Little Bear Creek, also known as Santa Rita Creek as it goes through certain jurisdictions. And as we get to the slide number three, that'll help show it on the screen. Thank you. And so as discussed, Little Bear Creek is a creek that starts in the northeast part of the Gabaln Range, generally flows southerly, just west of San Juan Grade Road, and flows through the unincorporated community of Bolsonols, which is just northeast of the city of Salinas. Also, in way of staff's understanding, over the past decade, flooding has occurred in this unincorporated community of Bolsonols. We've, we at the county level have heard of and have seen flooding issues that have occurred quite numerously over the course of the last few rainy seasons. Also, a way of understanding is that the board referral seeks to, number one, analyze and address floodplain issues in the Little Bear Creek area. And secondly, to address expedited permit processes for cleaning and long-term maintenance of Little Bear Creek. And so as we go on, we will see a location map of this area for the public and for everyone's reference on the next slide. And the area highlighted with the magenta line work and shading represents the unincorporated community of Bolsonols. Off on your left or on the west side of this map exhibit with north pointing up is the US-101 facility. One of the somewhat easterly, westerly roads is Espinoza Road, as well as Russell Road. And just north of Russell Road and just north of the city of Salinas city limits is this community of Bolsonols. And what we want to note is that just north of the community of Bolsonols, which is where the creek is from, are various agricultural use properties, a golf course, and some other sundry uses. And so we'll go to the next slide. In terms of process, as mentioned in the preliminary analysis report, staff from various departments have been meeting and discussing this issue over the course of this past calendar year of 2023. And in going through the process, what we believe this process should look like is starting off with a definition of the floodplain issues that are to be addressed and set a goal for a project or plan. It would then involve identification of relevant state and federal resource agencies who have relevant jurisdiction with regards to this creek. And then through the course of that, we would have a series of meetings and concentrate different ideas for consideration for this issue that the community of Bolsonols experiences. Thereafter, as it's a very specialized scope of work, staff would need to engage with a consultant to perform a drainage study and other necessary studies. But the drainage study itself would establish the flows and the quantity and provide the quantification of the issue in terms of the stormwater flows, flood flows, and overall the flooding itself. With that, we'd be able to develop a scope of the project, including implementation methodologies, which would follow suit with having those discussions with the regulators from what staff finds. And of course, there's then the preparation of the necessary project documents in terms of the state through the California Environmental Quality Act, in addition to compliance with state and local requirements. And then on top of that, there's a possibility that we would need to prepare a necessary project, National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA documentation, to comply with federal requirements. The next slide continues what the process would look like, and that would be the acquisition of county approvals and necessary, the application for approvals from the required permitting entity. Then, of course, comes the implementation, which does require funding. So requiring funding and implementation of the proposal then becomes part of it. And then ultimately, though we're not, at this point in time, clear on what that path looks like, since we are early on the process with even speaking with the regulators, there's likely a trial period that'll need to occur. And so if the, if there is a trial period, we would then need to assess the outcomes, report back to the regulatory bodies, and revise appropriately, should that be necessary. The next set of slides are some of the process procedures in terms of resources that are required. And in terms of resources, there's going to be a call for staff time. And the staff would include the Public Works, Facilities and Parks Department, Housing and Community Development, the Water Resources Agency, the Ad Commissioners Office, County Council, Representative CAOs of the County Administrative Officers Office, or CAO. And we've had conversations with the Resource Conservation District of Monterey County, and so we will continue having those conversations with them. And because this creek flows into the city of Salinas, perhaps and very likely, meetings will involve needing city of Salinas staff. Not included in this, but what will be necessary is the review time necessary by any applicable state and federal and maybe other local permitting regulatory entities that have jurisdiction. We briefly mentioned costs in terms of the process on the previous slides. At this juncture, the costs are not fully determined. Again, it consists primarily of staff time and consultant time, but there could be mitigation costs and fees that are necessary that are not fully developed yet at this point in time for this application. Again, since we're early on in the process, and this is just in terms of our scoping and what has been seen in past experience. And what, what will be conveyed in a moment is the Salinas River Maintenance Plan, as conducted by the Water Resource Agency and their experience they had. And anecdotally, the, the, the costs were in the order of millions of dollars. But in terms of schedule, we, we would hope to be able to return to the board, and it is our goal to return to the board somewhere before October the first of this calendar year, 2024. So as we go to the next slide, yeah, it will highlight the challenges that staff sees. And a lot of the challenges stem from what could be possible and what could be necessary in the discussion with the regulatory agencies. So permits will be likely required, and that will be part of the challenge, again, state, federal, and local. And there's complexities with the permits and how the, how the scope will be framed with the regulators in that there's numerous entities involved, ranging from multiple private property owners in the higher part of the watershed. There's various private property ownership within the community of Bolsonols itself. There's public properties that are involved, such as parcels under the Water Resource Agency and parcels under Monterey County within the community of Bolsonols, various easements and other, other things that are out there. So it's going to be complex because of the number of entities involved. And that's generally the nature of things when there's private property programs of this scale. As highlighted before with the meetings with the state and federal entities, there'll be potential state and federal and danger species act considerations. Again, because it's a creek, and creeks are generally environmentally sensitive habitat areas, again, generally speaking. And then a third component of the challenge is that there's limited space available to perform nearly any kind of physical activity within or near the creek due to the improvements that have been built on property that are so close to the banks of the creek itself. Again, highlighting once more is that another challenge is the ability to fund the activities to be performed through this process. We'll go to the next slide. And this next series of slides helps highlight some past examples of activity that has occurred that is very similar to what staff forecasts will be necessary for a creek. And with that, I would like to hand the floor over to the Deputy General Manager of the Water Resources Agency, Sean Murray.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board, and thank you, Randy, for that introduction. So I've been asked to talk a little bit about the Salinas River Stream Maintenance Program. This was a program the agency originally kind of got involved with after the 1995 floods. We called it the Channel Maintenance Program. And that was based on an emergency, kind of going in and getting emergency permitting. We were able to keep that project or program going until 2008. At that time, there really wasn't support from any of the regulatory agencies, state or federal, to continue the program as it was. It was a vegetation and sediment removal program. So the agency worked with many partners to kind of revamp that program and really evolve it into a flood management and habitat enhancement program, a stream maintenance program that focused on different reaches of the river and managed each reach for different purposes. We know the Salinas River is a much larger watershed, and it's very diverse in how it looks. And so looking at the different species that were in each river management unit, as well as what type of activities would be available, we broke it down into seven river management units just to make it a little bit more approachable as far as such a large watershed. And what happened over a series of about six to eight years was, you know, we went through the SEQA process and permitting process, and there really was a lot of balance back and forth between what the desire of the stakeholders was and what was eventually able to be permitted. What we did was a pilot program to just kind of test the waters as far as how much work could be done. How could the work be implemented? There was a lot of details upfront that needed to be addressed. How many acres of impact of vegetation, what type of vegetation species were out there? What type of habitat might be there? As well as what type of flood benefit you'd receive? And so a big part of the process was coming up with what, if you removed all the sediment and vegetation in that entire water system, what type of flood benefit would you receive? So that was really telling, and we did that through flood modeling efforts. Again, we focused on a shorter reach of the river, about fifteen miles, just so we could focus in on like, what would those benefits be? And a lot of back and forth with the regulators. We, we permitted that pilot program for about a five-year period, but we were lucky to get the full program approved under a new set of permits just two years later. So those superseded the pilot program, and that was, you know, allowing for all of the work throughout the river. Again, the work was predefined. There was metrics as far as what you could do, how much you could do, how you were going to approach it. And this really was, you know, administered by our agency in partnership with the RCD, but it was all fully implemented by the stakeholders. So they bear the brunt of the cost, a lot of training to make sure they're following the protocols of all the permits, and hired all their own contractors to do the work, and again, funded everything. So it was, it's quite, it still is quite a massive effort. What really made it successful, and we learned this a little bit of the hard way, kind of went in like, we're going to keep doing it as one agency, but really learned we needed to do a lot of outreach with the participants, with NGOs, with the public, with all the regulators, to really get everyone moving in the same direction. And so what we did is a lot of technical studies, vegetation surveys, flood modeling, species presence, habitat economics. And this was, again, the whole watershed. We used as much available data that was already currently available as possible, and then updated studies to balance the impacts with the benefit. We had technical working groups, so we had the stakeholders in those working groups, as well as technical experts and kind of working back and forth as far as what is feasible, what's acceptable to the landowners, because we're, you know, the work's all happening on their property. So access and amount of work and spoil areas and all of that, and what type of activities they were willing to work with us on. And then going back to a permitting committee, bringing a stakeholder to with us, you know, as a technical team, to the permitting committee and getting feedback early on was really critical. And that way, we're not going to apply for a permit that's never going to be issued. So there was back and forth between that technical working group and then the permitting committee, and then we go back to the drawing board and make revisions and, you know, out in the field and all of that as well. Can you go to the next slide, please? So what we learned from that is there's really been kind of a mixed response on if this project is a successful project. And that's due to so many challenges that we've incurred over the years. There were a lot of agencies involved, and there was really limited areas of agreement. And so there was a lot of sacrifices made from everyone to get a project that everyone could live with. And then as you implement a project like this, we've been implementing it under the current permit since 2016, you learn a lot about what works and what doesn't work, because up ahead of time, you have to really describe the size of the equipment, the pieces of equipment, again, your staging areas and all these protocols, and it doesn't always work as planned. So we have made a few amendments to the permits to try and streamline those areas that didn't work so well. And that's been kind of an evolution. The other thing was specifying the activities and the approaches in a dynamic system. So all these water systems are very dynamic, and they're going to change year to year with flow and with drought cycles and flood cycles. And so really being locked into activities can be challenging for this type of program. And flexibility is really important so that you can address what happens after a flood event or what happens after, you know, other, you know, lack of flow. So the costs for implementation and administration, again, mostly borne by the participants. The Water Resource Agency did contribute some of existing assessment money that was available to offset some of the costs, but the majority of the costs are paid by the private landowners participating in the program. And there's a lot of constraints on achieving really the desired flood protection with just sediment and vegetation removal. And I believe this would translate well to Bolsonols as well, just knowing that it's a narrow, confined channel. There might be other activities for that higher level of flood protection. So it's really critical to understand what level of flood protection are we trying to achieve here? Is it a five-year? Is it a 10-year? And that's the scale of the Salinas River Stream Maintenance Program. It's in, at that level of protection. We weren't able to achieve 25-year protection or 100-year protection in that program. So coming in early and figuring out the goals and understanding the drainage study and what we have to work with is kind of really critical as far as setting the stage. So that's my summary of this stream maintenance program. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I-
Thank you very much. Sorry about the supervisor. I just wanted to finish one last set of slides here, and then we'll be opening up for the Board and the public.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And so, again, thank you very much, Deputy General Manager Murray. And so bringing it back with, with the board and the public, the recommendations and options that staff are providing to your board today is to continue with the process, which means continuing with either pilot ideas, should they be necessary, or continue a much larger scale project. And ourselves, as well as representatives of Housing and Community Development, could certainly talk about more. We then bring the options back to the board for ones requiring board approvals. And then at that point in time, we'd have a better idea in terms of the time period and have that discussion with the Board of Funding Source. So that's the recommended approach. Also available to the board is to decide of, of whether or not to modify the referral or request or to rescind the referral slash request. That takes us to the next and final slide. That concludes staff's presentation, and we open up to the board and public for any questions or comments, and we thank you very much. And we can go ahead and stop sharing screen. Thank you.
Thank you. So several questions here to understand this. And the trial or a pilot kind of threw me a little bit, because usually when you look at a trial or a pilot, the common understanding of that is, oh, we're going to look to see if something is feasible. And as listening here to the various reports, best I understand that is we're trying in this period to see if there's a path for, what path to take, and if there is a path to, to foreflood management or, or other steps. Is that, is that correct?
This is Randy from Public Works, Facilities and Parks, and I'll start us off. And I see that Craig Spencer from HCD is also approaching. Generally, that would be the approach. But I'd like to open the floor to Craig Spencer. If Craig, if you'd like to also weigh in, please.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. Craig Spencer with Housing and Community Development. I, I think it's early in the process to determine really whether we're talking about a pilot program or not. program or not. I think part of the focus has been on if it's vegetation and sediment removal management on an ongoing basis, something similar to the Salinas River project that Water Resources is doing. We don't know what that would look like yet, but it could be, let's make sure what we're doing is working and having the intended effects before we commit to long-term maintenance of that river. If the solutions are more structural or upstream or something else, then it wouldn't be a pilot program. So I think we're still, we're still needing to get into identifying what those solutions are. And for my part, I was, I can add to any of the regulatory permitting agency permitting processes and what permits would be required and who's involved if that would be of interest to the Board as well.
So my understanding is the City of Salinas does have a permit for their site, is what somebody from Public Works had told me. Is that, that's correct?
Yes. So-
So there is a path there, it appears. If Salinas has been able to get it, we should be able to get it.
Yes, there's a path. It is considered a water of the United States, so Army Corps of Engineers would require a 404 permit, and the State Water Board would require their equivalent, which is a 401 permit, for, for channel modifications. There's potential for endangered species, so you'd need stream bed alteration from U.S. Fish and Wildlife and California Fish and Wildlife. You'd also need to do biological studies and likely have that back and forth that I think Shawna was talking about, about are there species present? The red-legged frog or the California tiger salamander, which would require additional take permits if they are present. If they're not present, the conversation usually goes, well, they're amphibians and they move, so they could be there at some point in the future, so you have to implement a lot of different mitigations and avoidance measures every time you go do the creek cleaning so that, you know, that, that ongoing effort to avoid impacts or take are included in the program if it goes that direction.
So, and I understand and quite well know how complicated this is, because we have private and public and it's jurisdictional mess essentially onto it. The fortunate thing is, we're talking about a few thousand feet, not the miles and miles of the Salinas River, and I hope that is a positive piece of information in terms of getting this rectified. I'm trying to, I want to make sure I understand the timeline in here. We're talking about potentially a two-year trial pilot, something like that, but this is going to come back in October is the proposal here? And what would exactly, would this, what's been presented here? Would all this be coming back in October if this is what we can do? Or what are we, what are we coming back in October with?
Steph can elaborate on this and Chair Church, and that is that it's, Steph's goal, provide at least a progress report to the Board on the progress made on this referral. Steph envisions that we could start those discussions with the regulatory agencies, so that way we have that, a better picture and can have a developed path forward at that point in time, also know what kind of studies may be necessary in order to get to the next level. And that would be information that we can now be able to convey to the Board in terms of our progress, the scope, associated costs, and so on, to continue down the path.
Thank you for that. Are there, anybody else have any questions on the Board? Okay. Don't see any. Is there anybody in chambers or a public comment on this matter or online?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay. Bring it back here then. I'll make a motion to approve this, to go ahead as we, I think that is what we have. Do we need a motion here? I'm trying to, actually, I usually-
I believe it's an update and direction if the Board would like to provide specific direction.
Yeah. Okay. There is no direct action then onto this, so thank you very much. And with that, I, we can go back to item number 20, which is regarding the bike park and the skateboard park, referral update.
I said, there's some progress made on this one. Moving forward.
Good afternoon. Let me share my screen. All right. Do we see it? Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. Good afternoon, Board, Chair Church. I'm Lindsay Larrable. I'm the Assistant Director for Public Works, Facilities &amp; Parks, and I'm here to provide an update on referral 2017.20. And just as a reminder, it is a request for a lease agreement between the City of Salinas and the County of Monterey regarding the county's parcel adjacent to 855 East Laurel Drive in Salinas for the implementation of a bike and skate park. The referral also includes a request to implement a sidewalk, but that's already been completed, so for this presentation, I'm just going to focus on the park. In the Board Report, I had three recommendations. One is to direct staff to continue the referral as written, as stated up above, to rescind the referral, or staff's recommendation is to modify the referral to collaborate with the Salinas Regional Sports Authority to relocate the proposed park from the location at East Laurel Drive to the Salinas Regional Soccer Complex located at 1440 Constitution Boulevard. As a way of reminder, this is 855 East Laurel location. The referral came forward in 2017. It was rescinded or closed, reopened in 2020. Staff came forward. The final location was determined, kind of the flat part of the mesa. You can see my cursor kind of going across there where the, where the sidewalk is. Money was not allocated to this project. It was put into the five-year CIP, but staff was looking for funding opportunities, and that's when in 2021, the Prop 68 grant opportunity opened up. It was a $3 million no-match opportunity. So at that point, we started doing community outreach for several of our parks, but at this location, we had overwhelming support and excitement for a BMX, or we'll call it a skate and bike park. So taking that information, we hired consultants, and they took in the public feedback and started to design and create the programming for this park that you see on the bottom right-hand part of the screen. It's two separate parks, the bike park and then the skate park. It does have spectator seating, there was a retention pond, some landscaping, fencing, and wayfinding signage that was going to be along the trail that connects to all these recreational amenities that you find at this complex. Staff did submit the grant application. Unfortunately, in the fall of August 2022, we did find out we were not awarded the grant application, but we were told we had a strong, it was a strong application, and to keep looking for opportunity. And at that point, staff was thinking of ways that we can continue to move forward this referral so we can make this park a reality. And the spring of 2023, oh, skipped a slide. Spring of 2023, staff approached the Salinas Regional Sports Authority and said, would they, as we were working with them on other grant opportunities to implement and expand their complex, we thought perhaps that we can look at an opportunity to bring together some of our, or bring this referral and combine it and put it on their property. We expressed that there was certain criteria that'd be really important to us. One is the proximity to the road for visibility and safety. The second is that it would have a connection to the existing trail system. And something that we were not able to provide at the other location was restroom amenities as well as parking. At that point, the Sports Authority, they showed interest, and they said, hey, let's think about this and let's utilize, actually utilize the consultants that you've been using, because they're well aware of what the public was interested in, and they came back with this concept here. It hits all the benchmarks that we're looking for, the proximity for safety, visibility, and amenities, as well as the opportunity to have two separate bike parks or skate parks here. As you can see here, we, the concept shows a plaza skate park and a flow skate park. Now, don't ask me to go into the details of the difference, because I'm not a skateboarder, but as you can see here, the plaza is more like the street, street skating, and then the flow is what you would see like a pool with the rounded edges on it. Again, it's surrounded by all these pathways, and then across the sidewalk here is the connection to this bike park here. And you can see the concept image, it would be a paved asphalt with varying surfaces, so it would create that challenge there. And it's great, because it's nestled among the existing trees there, so you have some screening, but you also have the visibility, because the trees are matured, and you can see it from the Constitution Boulevard. It's surrounded by split rail fencing, has spectator seating, and is going to be, it nicely nestles into that site there. So staff sees this as an opportunity to work in collaboration with our partner. We're not asking for funding at this point, rather than to get the Board's approval to move the location to this site, to continue to work with the Salinas Sports Authority on finding grant opportunities to fund the park. But the best part about this is that they have, they have come forth and said, once, if we're able to build it, they'll be able to manage it. So we know that if we were to build this, that it would be taken care of in perpetuity. So that concludes staff's presentation, and I will open it up to any questions or comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Leho?
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to really thank Lindsay Larrable for working on this. We, in our political careers, we're working on a lot of things, but, and as I told Lindy, Lindsay, that this park, one day when we realize it, to see kids out here playing, skating and biking, and adding these additional recreational opportunities at the Salinas Sports Complex or the Sports, Regional Soccer Complex, for me would be a really amazing thing to see happen in Salinas. There is only one other skate park in a city of 160,000, a city with a very young population, but it's not in a neutral neighborhood. Not every child can go to Las Casitas to utilize that skate park. And that's why, and plus, it was an older model. This is an updated model. The Salinas Sports Authority has hired local engineer Zach Warmout, who creates these skate parks and BMX pump tracks all over the country. So it's a local person, whose mom is former county supervisor, Santa Cruz County Supervisor Marty Warmout. But, but this, this really captures everything that I really wanted at the other county property. We needed a place that was visible so that parents feel safe dropping off their kids there, people could see them. It also really protects against vandalism. And having spoke with Zach Warmout and Alex Fowler, who's another engineer who had come out, they said, this is like the best properties to have, where there is a lot of visibility, and it's also for the safety of kids. But the main question that we really hadn't figured out is even if we were to be successful to get this money to build this skate and bike park, we hadn't thought of it, well, who will manage it afterwards, right? It was a question we were going to leave to another day, the operation and maintenance of the park, but here we have an answer. The Salinas Sports Authority is willing and is actually enthusiastic about adding this to their complex and to take responsibility. And so they took it upon themselves to hire this engineer to make the plans for their property. They put some money into this, they have the plans, they modified it a little bit, getting some feedback from all of us, maybe putting in some lighting as well, so it allows that park to be used when it gets darker earlier. So, so now all we need to do, if we were to prove and get the blessing of the Board, then now this, we'll, we'll keep working with the Salinas Sports Authority to try to raise the money, whether it's a future parks grant, whether it's a legislative member's budget request in the future, or other opportunities that may arise. Now, we have a plan, we have a location, it's, it addresses all the aspects that we wanted for these parks, and I really love how even they designed to keep the trees around the bike park, that it will keep that, that beauty, the greenery around it, so I think it will just add a lot more. We know that on the weekends, there's thousands of people that come to the soccer complex, but now for the younger siblings, when they come to see their brother play or sister play soccer, now they could go skating and biking, and it'll all be there in a safe place for the community. This will definitely be probably the best soccer complex anywhere on the Central Coast, if not in Northern California, or perhaps even the state of California, because of all these added things that are coming and making this a really special place. So I want to thank Lindsay especially, because it wouldn't, we wouldn't get this far without her kind of vision and helping us, guide us through this process. But I'm very supportive of this, and would love to give this blessing, and I'll keep working with Lindsay and, and with the Sports Authority leadership to try to find those potential funding sources to get this off the ground. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the Board? Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this? See nobody?
On Zoom, we have Valeria Hernandez.
Olivia Hernandez. Yes, Olivia, you have two minutes to speak on this referral report.
Just testing the microphone. Is it working? Perfect. Hi, everyone. My name is Valeria Hernandez. I am from the Salinas Regional Sports Authority, work as a public affairs specialist, and I just wanted to express my enthusiasm about the potential addition of the BMX pump track and skate park. I think that it's an amazing addition to our project and totally ties in to our vision and our mission to provide not just soccer facilities, but a place for pretty much everyone in the community to come and feel safe. And I feel confident in the growth of our team to be able to maintain and manage space as we have with everything else. And so, yeah, I'm really excited, and I hope that the Board goes through with letting this become a reality, and I know a lot of people would be excited about it, including me. So thank you to the Board, and thank you to Lindsay and Supervisor Leho for spearheading this movement. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have Jonathan Deanda on Zoom.
Yes, Jonathan, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Board. Jonathan Deanda here with the Salinas Regional Sports Authority. Just to reiterate with Valeria and Supervisor Leho had mentioned, you know, we're very excited to have this, this addition of the, of the skate park and BMX pump track at the Salinas Regional Soccer Complex. And, you know, to echo, we do believe that it'll provide a safe and inclusive space for our community and members of really all ages to enjoy, you know, our continued outdoor facility, which I know it's called the Soccer Complex, but with all these new additions, it really is becoming a central hub that'll, that'll support, you know, various different community members despite their, whether or not they play soccer or not. So really, I urge you guys to support this important project and, you know, help create a more vibrant and inclusive recreational space for all of our community to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
That's all. Okay, we'll close with a comment on that then, and being there are no other questions. Thank you very much, Lindsay.
And I just, and I just want to point it out, this is right in between Supervisor Church and my district right now, so it would be, benefit both districts, but definitely these skate parks and pump tracks attract youth from all over the region, you know? And so, so there's a lot happening at the soccer complex right now with building the artificial, the two artificial fields, and there's more parking coming in. Phase three is the other seven, eight soccer fields, and they have a sand field that would be for other sports and for other training exercises. But now having this, I think this is really going to be something the community will really embrace, and it'd be one of those major recreational legacies that this Board could help really make happen in Salinas. Thank you.
And Chair, I think she's actually looking for a vote on modifying the referral.
And I'll make that motion to make that modification with the, with the changes and moving this potential location to this new site at the Salinas Regional Soccer Complex.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll third that.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll still have a formal vote, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the motion passes there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay.
With that, we'll move to Board comments. Supervisor Lopez, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Happy to kick us off. Just to share with the community, the lakes are at record levels. If you're still trying to figure out what you're going to do with your summer plans, it's a great place to go. Want to thank the Department of Fish and Wildlife for stocking San Antonio for the first time in about 50 years with trout as well. So I know that's bringing a lot of people out to the park. You don't have to wait for the fish season officially to open, but it is an opportunity to get your family out there. We've made investments in some of what I'll call the non-sexy things, which are the water pipelines, the electric, so a lot more of our outlets work, everything's up and running. And so we invite the community out to revisit that facility as we've made those investments. I'll share that I'm headed up- I'll share that I'll, I'm headed up to Sacramento this evening, along with some of my colleagues here in the next couple of days for the CSAC Legislative Conference. While, while there, I'll be chairing a meeting as president of the Latino Caucus, as well as meetings with legislators in my role as the Chair of RCRC, and so that's where I'll be the next couple of days. But with that, I'll wrap my comments and send it back, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor, ask you.
Thank you. I am also headed to Sacramento for the California Association of Counties meeting Legislative Conference this week, where I'll be co-chairing the Women's Leadership Forum with a couple meetings. It's great that we have such an active board at CSAC. I wanted to just announce that on Wednesday, May 1st, we'll be hosting our next Wednesday with Wendy, including Ezekiel Vega, who's our county budget director, to provide our community the opportunity to ask questions and engage and learn a little bit more about the county budget process and our current budget situation as we go into the next year. We'll be live on Facebook and Zoom. Everyone's welcome to join us from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. This past weekend, my chief of staff, Yuri Anderson, and her family had a great time at the 18th Annual Marina Earth Day. We look forward to continuing to celebrate Earth Day throughout District Four. We've got celebrations coming up in Salinas on April 20th and the city of Seaside on April 21st. I also want to just give a shout out of recognition to Carlos Hernandez, who's an intern studying political science at Monterey Peninsula College. He's here in the audience with us today and has been providing support in our office, learning, asking questions, helping us get projects completed, responding to constituents, and deepening his knowledge and understanding of local government. So thank you for joining us today and for the work that you're doing with the District Four team. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Supervisor Leho, and I'll let you in the, you know, after the readout too. So if you have, go ahead and do your board comments now though, if you want.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, we're all going to CSAC as soon as this meeting finishes. I serve on the Executive Committee of the California State Association of Counties, but also this Friday, we have a board of directors meeting, but we also, I also have the California Broadband Middle Mile Advisory Committee meeting up in Sacramento, so I might have to split my time on Friday morning between both of those meetings. I was lucky to be able to ask, be invited to do a write-up on, on my Young Supervisors Program, which was featured this week on the CSAC newsletter, and I also converted that article into an op-ed in the Monterey Herald last Sunday, just talking about our program that, that takes place during the summer to add, allow more opportunities for young people to learn about county government, law and policy, build up their resume, and we've, we've had, I put 250, but I think we have almost 300 graduates of that program so far, and it's really led by my staff, Javier Gomez and Jasmine Mejia, with the support of Linda Gonzalez. It's mostly by staff, so I have to give them the accolades, but it's really nice to have a program that embraces young people and really tries to use our office to open more opportunities for them, but also to help foster and prepare the next generation of leaders. And I want to acknowledge Supervisor Lopez, who has his own program now, Santa Cruz County Supervisor Felipe Hernandez, who started his last summer, and about three or four years ago, Supervisor Tulare County Supervisor Eddie Villaro started his summer Young Supervisors Program as well. I did, I did attend Monterey County Peace Officers Association Dinner last Friday night, as was Supervisor Lopez, and I think your staff was there? And I did, I don't, we had a lot of honorities, the ceremony went long, which Chris stayed till the end. But I did want to acknowledge our employees. I want to just read their names. Monterey County District Attorney's Office for Peace Officer of the Year, Juan John Magaña Investigator of the Year, Monterey County Probation Department, Bianca Castillo, Deputy Probation Officer. She was the one that was on-site early on in the Royal Oaks Nursery case, so she was acknowledged for her leadership in that case and not being intimidated to leave by the owners. Monterey County Sheriff's Office, Emilia Reyes, Deputy Corrections Operations Bureau. The Sheriff's Department, Richard Gang, Deputy Enforcement Operations Bureau. And for Support Services, Employee of the Year, the DA had Patty Williamson, Legal Assistant. Probation had Leonardo Cortez, Management Analyst III, and the Sheriff's Department had Megan Miller, a Record Specialist. And then lastly, for the 2023 Civilian Volunteer of the Year, the Sheriff's Office had Clarice Correa. So I want to acknowledge all those outstanding employees for really providing a lot of leadership and making our county law enforcement divisions look very good. Last but not least, I wanted to thank my, say happy birthday to my niece, who had a quinceañera last Saturday, Brianna Gonzalez, a student at Everett-Alves High School, but today is actually her birthday, her 15th birthday, so I want to say happy quinceañera, mija, and we're very proud of you and wish you very luck. It was a beautiful ceremony with so many people at the Pal Building, good food, good company, and good music as well. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just have a couple of, a couple of items. This Thursday, 5:30, Gavillan Library in North Main Street, we're holding our town hall for the North Salinas Baronda area, and we'll have me, myself, and Councilmember Orlando Ossonio there, as well as Salinas PD and Roxanne Wilson from, our homeless director as well. And the only other item we'll bring up is this Saturday, and it's Castroville Cleanup Day at the, nine o'clock at the North County Recreational Center. There's going to be a raffle and a barbecue at noon, you know, who knew that picking up trash could be so much fun? So I hope many people as possible can come out to that. And with that, I'll turn to our county council if you have anything to report.
There's no reportable action from closed session.
And finally, I want to turn the adjournment of the meeting over to Supervisor Leho.
Great, thank you. I think our clerk's going to put an image up for the person that we are adjourning in memory of today.
Yes, that's correct. Alex, can you please present it?
It's on. Thank you very much. Today, everyone, we are adjourning in memory of Sergio Ignacio Alejo, no relation, but a good friend of mine. Everyone assumed he was a relative, and we just said we were primos, we were cousins, but we're not related. Sergio Ignacio Alejo, age 42, passed away peacefully, surrounded by his loving family on April 4th, 2024, after a lifelong battle against cancer. Sergio was born here in Salinas on July 26, 1981. Sergio had a passion and loyalty to his dreams. Those dreams would come true and exceed his expectations. He worked hard and was committed to his family and his business. He and his wife, Elvia Salgado, had a vision of opening a restaurant with the greatest food, atmosphere, and love. That dream became Stony's Tap House and Bistro in South Salinas. His heart was larger than life. If he could, he would, he would help every single time. His community was very important to him, and he would always made sure to bring positivity and kindness in all his endeavors. In 2013, Sergio successfully ran for school board on the Monterey County Board of Education, District Seven, where he served from 2013 to 2018, and advocated for better quality education for all our local schoolchildren. He was also a big San Francisco 49ers fan and was a season ticket holder. That's why I have this photo up of him at Levi Stadium, but as you can read, his, he was battling cancer and his jersey states tackle cancer. Sergio, Sergio's family was exiled. He is survived by his wife, Elvia Salgado, and his five children, Lydia, Danielle, Giovanni, Iliana, and Kailani, who were just born a few months ago. His parents and Patricia and Sergio Alejo, his brothers, are Oscar, David, Amanda, and Hector, and he had many nephews, cousins, aunts, and uncles. Sergio has left a lasting legacy, and that legacy will live on. He will truly be missed by all those who knew him. Today, the Monterey County Board of Supervisors adjourned this meeting in memory of Sergio Alejo out of respect for his leadership and his vision to uplift Salinas and everyone he knew. May he rest in peace, and I will ask the community to keep supporting his small business that he worked so hard to lift up. His wife, Elvia, will keep running that restaurant. I know the community came out yesterday, hundreds of people came out to the church ceremony, but this morning, he had his mass for his parents and also was buried during the time of this meeting. So today, we adjourn in his memory, and Sergio, you'll be missed by all of us here in Monterey County and Salinas. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, we shall adjourn today's meeting.